Closed meeting in order. Roll call.
Mayor Calvin.
Here.
Councilmember Christiansen.
Here.
Plowman.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Amon.
Here.
Dokken.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
All stand up for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, united one, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just remind everybody that if you've got your cellphone with you, if you just silenced your cellphone, that'd be appreciated for tonight's meeting. Are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, I have one I'd like to add in front of you. You have an appointment for the consent agenda of an at-large member to the Economic Development Commission Operations Board, and I would like to recommend Kelly Tawersha. We do have his bio there for you to see. His family has long owned businesses here in town. I'm aware that he does live out on Green Lake, but it's the at-large position, and that position rotates between the city and the county, and this time it is time for the city to appoint that, so I'd recommend Kelly Tawersha. I have spoke with him, and I've also spoken with Steve Rehnquist, and so I'd ask to add that to the consent items. And then additionally, I would ask our fire chief to make some comments about the gas leak on 15th Street that happened over the last week. Just if you're okay with that, we'll do that at the end of the meeting, if that's okay with you. Okay? So...
I'll move to approve the consent items, Mr. Mayor.
Second. Motion been made and seconded to approve the consent items with the one addition.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Amon.
Thank you. Due to our conflict of interest policy that we passed, my wife and I were at the planning commission on a replat for some land we own, so therefore I will be abstaining after talking with Robert Scott on that portion of the minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Poll same sign? Okay, scheduled hearing, Small Cities Development Program. City Administrator Stevens.
Yes, Ms. Jill Banks is here on behalf of the Candy Ojai County HRA, and she will be leading us through the hearing.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight we're having a public hearing to receive public input and comment on expanding the target area of the 2012 Small Cities Development Program area for rental rehab activities. In 2013, Minnesota Housing granted tax credits to the Wilmer HRA to do a rehab project at Highland Apartments, and at that time, Minnesota Housing consults with Deed, and they collaborate on funding for projects they fund, and at that time, Deed requested that Small Cities Development Program funds be used on the Highland Rehab Project. Highland was not originally part of the target area, and so that's the reason for having the public hearing.
Okay, any other comments from the public? Seeing and hearing none, I'll bring it to the council table. Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Fagerly.
I'll make a motion to approve the Small Cities Development Program grant and extension and target area expansion.
Second. The resolution has been introduced and has been seconded. Kevin, is this a roll call?
It is not a resolution unless you've been later required. No.
Okay, simple motion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Poll same sign? Motion carries. Thank you, Jill, for that presentation. And next we'll have the city council open forum. Did we have anybody sign up for open forum?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Bob Score has signed up.
Okay, Bob? Bob, we do have the three-minute timer that you'll see in front of you tonight, and we ask you to follow that procedure.
Yes, sir. You know, Bob Score, 617 Southwest 14th Street. I'm really proud to be the first speaker contesting on the new beat-the-clock open forum. So on that, I better get going here, because I'm on the clock. I just want to give a couple definitions again, because we seem to forget. One, I want to give the definition for city council. A municipal body having legislative and administrative powers, ordinances, and appropriating funds. It is a legislative body that governs a city, town, municipality, or local government area. Reason I bring that up is I hear this micromanaging city council tries to do. By this, I have every power to do it. The other word I need to talk on is respect. On a practical level, respect includes taking someone's feelings, needs, thoughts, ideas, wishes, and preferences into consideration. It means taking all of these seriously and giving them worth and value. In fact, giving someone respect seems similar to valuing them and their thoughts, feelings, et cetera. It also includes acknowledging them, listening to them, being truthful with them, and accepting their individuality and their idiosyncrasies. Not real hard to figure out. Seems like we have a little lack of respect in a lot of areas, that's why I brought it up. So I just have one little quote to say here. It says, "A government that robs Peter to pay Paul can always depend on the support of Paul." George Bernard Shaw. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Going to the next item on the agenda, which is the Wilmer Fire Department Oath of Office. Chief Hendrickson.
Good evening, Mayor Calvin, and members of council. Tonight I have the privilege of introducing four of the Wilmer Fire Department's probationary members who have completed their probationary period. Service before self, these three words speak volumes about one's personal beliefs, decision-making, and commitment to a specific cause. In some cases, they're attached to a tragic event or an individual as a matter of reverence, but in every case, they represent the highest level of commitment that an organization can ask of an individual or a team. Much like those in the military, upon entering the fire service, we all take an oath to uphold the core values of the organization we serve. We agree to protect our respective communities in the most effective and efficient manner possible. We agree to represent our department and our city leaders as professionals. We agree to make decisions and take actions that are reflective of departmental policies and procedures, and we agree to use the resources provided, coupled with the training and education we've received, to provide the highest level of protection possible to our citizens. And when necessary, take calculated risks to save the lives and protect property. Over the last year, each of the four firefighters that'll be coming up before you have completed over 130 hours of Fire 1 and Fire 2 training along with hazardous materials. This number in and of itself may seem insignificant, yet with all the demands of each firefighter's personal life, I believe that this is not insignificant and should be recognized in a public forum. Each of the firefighters being recognized this evening, on average, have worked 415 hours, attended fire calls, and training over the last year in order to be operationally effective on the scene of an incident. I believe in today's society, this is a sacrifice not only for the new firefighter, but a huge sacrifice for the firefighter's family. As a firefighter, many birthdays and holiday celebrations are missed because of the commitment each firefighter has made to service before self. Therefore, I would also like to recognize each firefighter's family and thank them for their support. I will now administer the oath of office for our new firefighters. As I call your name, please come and stand before me and face me, please. Nick Baker. Kaitlin Braybender. Travis Dickerson. Nick Cron. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I...
I...
...to solemnly swear...
To solemnly swear.
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
For the Constitution of the United States.
...and of the state of Minnesota...
And of the state of Minnesota.
...and faithfully discharge the duties of...
Faithfully discharge the duties of...
...the firefighter for the city of Wilmer...
Firefighter for the city of Wilmer.
...and the county of Candy Ojai...
And the county of Candy Ojai.
...and the state of Minnesota...
State of Minnesota.
...to the best of my judgment and ability...
To the best of my judgment and ability.
...as a firefighter for the city of Wilmer...
As a firefighter for the city of Wilmer.
...I accept this oath and hereby dedicate...
Accept this oath and hereby dedicate.
...my fire service career...
My fire service career.
...to the protection of lives and property...
To the protection of lives and property.
...and commit to service before self...
Commit to service before self.
So help me God.
So help me God.
This evening, the following people are coming up and pinning their significant other, or maybe their son or daughter's badge this evening. Nick Baker, his father, Tom Baker, will be putting his badge on this evening. If you would come forward, please. This evening, Kaitlin Braybender, her father, Lyle Braybender, will be pinning the badge on this evening. Travis Dickerson, his wife, Thea, will be placing the badge on this evening. Last but not least, Nick Cron, Nick's father, Dave Cron, will be pinning the badge on this evening.
The one that's laughing the loudest would be my wife, back there. First call, I want to thank the city of Wilmer for giving my son such an honor, and And I want my wife, Jane, to please stand up in the back, and Nick's wife, and as we know, the women are the biggest support we got. They make it possible, and I want to thank every one of you firefighters for helping my son along the way, and especially you, Chief.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you very much, congratulations. Mayor, council, thank you.
Thank you.
On behalf of the mayor and council, I want to thank you for taking your oath of office, also going through your 130-plus hours of training, over 400 hours of responding on calls and other things that you've given to our community. I personally know the sacrifices that you will make, and I entrust in Chief Hendrickson's hands, you guys, to do a great job for our community, so we're very proud of you. Today is the start of a great career for you. You will do fabulous, and you have an excellent department to work alongside, having served there for over 12 years, so thank you very much. Any council members? Okay, thank you very much. You guys can stick around as long as you wish. We've got a few more things on the agenda. I'll be giving my state of the city address. It appears to me the firefighters have heard enough of what I've had to say, so... But anyways, but yeah, feel free. So thanks, Chief Hendrickson. This time I'll do my state of the city address.
Tonight, as I deliver my first state of the city address, I look back over a year of change at the city and also these chambers here. Like many organizations, we are transitioning with our staff and losing some of our institutional knowledge along the way. Of course, this has also brought us an opportunity for new staff to join our organization, bringing new perspectives and new talents to our community. We have also introduced youth to our council table. Welcome, Councilmember Plowman, again. I personally look forward to your insight and wisdom as we embrace younger thoughts in our decision-making process. Over the past several years, I've attended a number of council meetings, and I believe that gives me an advantage to hit the ground running rather than trying to play catch-up in learning the issues Wilmer faces. I also attended council meetings for over 13 years as a department director, and now I can see both sides of the issues we face. First of all, I want to speak a little bit about 2014 before I talk about 2015. Last year, the city of Wilmer grew its tax base in residential housing, adding 14 new housing units with an added tax capacity of $4.3 million. Its commercial industrial tax capacity also saw an increase by over $47 million. This includes projects such as Bethesda's campus expansion, $17.5 million, Jenny O'Turkey Stores corporate expansion, $6 million, MinDOT office remodel and update, $6 million, and over 21 new businesses opened in our community within the last year, including Aldi's, Hardee's, and Taco Bell. We also saw Relco do a major expansion in the industrial park. We should celebrate the increased tax base and work to build on this for 2015. We are fortunate to serve as a regional center for west-central Minnesota. We are blessed with Rice Hospital and strong medical clinics, and ACMC and Family Practice Medical Group, all of whom are exploring new ways to work more closely together in this challenging healthcare climate. This also includes expanding physician specialties and hospital coverage. Contracts were awarded to complete infrastructure in our industrial park, add hiking and biking trails, and we started our Western Interceptor and Lakeland Drive sewer projects. Just under one-quarter mile of roads were constructed last year, and for 2015, we are planning on over 1.25 miles of reconstruction. We all recognize the need to catch up on our street maintenance. Our community saw some wonderful recognition outside of the region with the crowning of Laura Swartz as Aquatennial Queen and the Light of the World display, recognized as best in Minnesota. Also, in the past year, we saw hundreds of citizens become engaged in our community's future through Vision 2040. Citizen efforts led to our first-ever movies in the park, the launch of two leadership programs, Vision 2040 Leadership and We Lead. Citizens are still working on a dog park, affordable housing, diversity, supporting our downtown, and many more additional projects. The four focus areas of Vision 2040 are leadership development, welcoming newcomers, developing more things to do, and improving the economic vibrancy of the region. These are unquestionably solid goals for this council and mayor to support. Next, I'd like, I've identified a few areas that are important to me in the coming year. First, I want to improve how we work as a city council. The public expects their elected officials to get their work done, have dedicated employees, and serve the public. So the question is, how do we develop a leadership team and develop trust in our elected body? We work together and stop holding grudges. I've been working with City Administrator Stevens to hold a retreat in the near future so we can have these frank conversations. A citizen a few days ago told me, "Marv, deal with the elephant in the room first, and then you can get on to the real business at hand." I am committed to working as a team, starting today, and we all have a new opportunity to do the same. We have to stop blaming our past, set concrete goals on our future, and get after it. Secondly, I want to hang our "Wilmer's Open for Business" sign and make it real. There are models for us to follow to improve the business climate here in Wilmer. One only needs to look at Shakopee and see what they did. A once-empty downtown, retail spaces now have waiting lists for occupants. Why is that? Because their council developed a policy and allowed their staff to recruit accordingly. If projects are developed based on good council policy, there should be little room for criticism when a project reaches the final decision process. We have our tools in the toolbox, so now let's allow staff to use them. We are the major economic engine in west-central Minnesota, and our industrial park is ready for expansion and new business. I will welcome all new jobs, and am willing to visit with any and all industry or business that wants to locate here in Wilmer. We also need to embrace our local chamber and partner with them again. Growing existing industry and business will be the key to job growth in our future. We need to continue to support the Railroad Y Project and work to get a rail spur into our industrial park. We also must support filling the gap on Highway 23 so we have four lanes between Wilmer and St. Cloud. Third, I am looking forward to receiving the final report and recommendation for the master park plan in February. I want us to support this plan and see how this can be added to our overall capital planning. Having the majority of our park equipment exceeding 20 years in useful life is unacceptable, in my opinion, and that also has been stated from this council chamber. We need to develop a plan that will encourage younger people to locate in our area. Having a community that understands investing in our future makes sense and is something that we should all embrace. Fourth, we need responsible budgeting. Wilmer has been fiscally conservative for many years, and we're in a strong financial position today. We can pay the bills and keep the doors open, but my question is, is that what we want? To just keep the doors open? We have delayed infrastructure improvements at the expense of the bottom line. With budget shifts taken last year, we depleted RAC-8 funds, transferred unspent capital, spent down reserves, borrowed from the Public Investment Revolving Fund, and decreased our insurance reserve fund to only cover a portion of the required improvements needed at the auditorium. Those actions will have a negative impact on budgets for many years to come. The levy increase of $250,000 for 2015 is recommended to repay the PIER fund, yet that replacement takes $250,000 away from new projects. The repayment of the industrial, or the insurance fund will take $30,000 to $40,000 annually away from our general fund. The capital reserve fund will not be replenished per the adopted 2015 budget. These types of decisions will challenge us as we move forward to develop our 2016 budget, find the money, is the saying I've heard repeatedly. We must budget responsibly for today and for our future. We must recognize the costs and value of providing quality services to the public. Finally, as we look forward, we need to remember that staff vacancies and staff turnover are not necessarily a sign of a healthy city. We need to review our organizational chart, compensation plan, and our employee benefit plan. I will recommend hiring a full-time human resource director to assist our city administrator. Our goal, our organization is too large to continue without the management structure in place for one of our most important assets, our employees. I was elected on the platform of vision, leadership, and collaboration. It is my intent to live up to what I told the voters that I would do, and I hope everyone here this evening is willing to commit to assisting our staff and community as well. We have a great community, and I look forward to serving as your mayor, and I will do my part to make Wilmer a better place to live, work, and raise a family. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the consideration of the city auditorium renovation change order number three. Kevin Halliday.
Mayor Calvin, members of the council, you have before you a document detailing various projects inside change order number three. There are seven subsections, and I'll go through them one at a time. The first one we'll have up on the screen. We have a firing range, additional work to relocate the shooting lane target brace. This is on the floor, this is, or was, at the base of the deceleration chambers, and the cables of all 10 lanes are hooked on the ceiling, and of course, that brings the target they're shooting at to whatever distance they cable back to. And it was not in the contract to move that. The new renovation has a steel wall in its place coated with two inches of black rubber, and then a block wall before that, and so we need to move this 19 or 20 inches forward, and the cost is listed there at $4,743 for that change order. 3B. In the detailing of the electrical panel, it was read that the panel was a 600-amp service, and unfortunately, it was mislabeled. And the contractor purchased a new electrical box that came with a 600-amp breaker and a 175-amp breaker. The moment they hooked it up, they realized that with 400-amp service, that breaker will not work, and unfortunately, we can't take, give it back. So we own a 600-amp breaker. We obviously have a change order to purchase the 400-amp breaker. We are dealing with our electrician at the wastewater treatment plant to see if they could use it in the future, and if not, we will talk with the staff members at the Wilmer Municipal Utilities, so we bought an extra asset here, I guess. The third one is removal of the fans in the upper northeast and southeast corners of the gym. That was never original equipment up there. There's a two-by-four plywood wall in each corner. Those fans that were moving here around are no longer needed, and it was staff's recommendation to remove them back to the original design. D is just a small patching of the existing range ceiling baffle. That was a tiny little $300 adjustment. Four, and we'll put it up on the screen, or five, I guess, we'll put it up on the screen. That's always been a problem, and we're recommending correcting that now. This is in lane 10 on the south side of the 10-lane shooting range. Maybe it sticks out more with the black rubber on the walls now, but that shot is taken almost in the shooting position of range lane 10, and the fluorescent light up there on a three-foot lane is about two feet of unprotected metal. It doesn't go all the way to the wall, and now with the black baffle, which is also rubber, that light kind of protrudes into the eye, but the whole fluorescent light system is unprotected to any stray bullets. And it's recommended that we extend the metal to the south wall and cover that with two inches of black rubber also. 3F. The support pillar in the middle has been designed to have one and a half feet of black rubber block stacked in front of it to protect bullets from hitting the support pillar, and we believe it cuts too much of the lane off, and we're recommending that they reduce that to one block and strap it to the pillar, and gives an additional 12 inches or six on each side of those two shooting lanes. That is a $0 change. 3G. There's additional framing and blocking in the basement hallway. The ceiling grid had to go through there, right when you come to the bottom of the steps. From the old mechanical room to the left toward the gun range, that whole area there is needing some additional ceiling grid. is needing some additional ceiling grid to make everything framed properly, and that's $800. Then one of the larger ones. Three H. Changes to the air handling equipment in the shop drawings had some additional electrical work. There was about $5,000 worth of additional electrical work, but some of the electrical inventory and wires that were there were credited back that could be used so that all the air handling equipment, all three units, are properly wired. It is staff's recommendation that we accept change order number three. All of those costs total $15,321. That brings the new contract sum to $781,221. We also listed there the contingency amount remaining for this project. It is nearing completion, but we are only down to $37,179 left in that contingency fund. Having said all that, Mr. Mayor, it is staff's recommendation to adopt a resolution approving change order number three.
I'll move staff's recommendation.
Motion made and seconded to approve staff's recommendation. Discussion?
I didn't hear a second, Mr. Mayor. Second. Okay.
Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are there any other potential overruns that we know of, or is this pretty much?
We know one more coming, as the lower floor is now a large maintenance room. And as you walk straight down the basement to the last thing, there are no doors protecting that. There used to be a little gate there, but the staff are recommending, and we will be getting a cost, to have a double locked door there so that the public does not go in the maintenance room. Your best guess of what a double door, steel door with lock on it might be, $2,500? I don't know, but we know that's coming because we're going to recommend protecting that room from the wandering public. They don't need to be in the maintenance room.
Where we're getting down, though, where there shouldn't be too many more, we run into?
That's the only other one we really know of at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kevin, on that three B for the 600-amp down to 400-amp because we're not putting in air conditioning right now, what happens in the future if we add air conditioning then?
Well, I don't know. That would be an engineering statement to say we need 600. Obviously, the utilities then would have to bring us more power into the building, and hey, we would have a breaker. But at this point, because we don't need air, it doesn't seem to be a driving factor. At this point, 400-amp is all that is needed to drive all those air handlers and the other equipment.
So, if they do put central air in, it'll be for the whole building or just for the basement area?
Well, that would be up to the council, because you can certainly central air conditioning the whole equipment, which I don't know if that would be necessary, so you could zone it to what might meet some needs.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Dawkins, and then Councilmember Nelson to follow. Councilmember Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do we have any better estimate on potentially when the shooting range will open and the auditorium itself will reopen for use?
Councilmember Dawkins, some facts that we do have is that delivery of all the air handling units will arrive January 30. The large one is going to be coming in three parts and going down the shaft that is in the northwest corner. So, that is not being built at this point because they need to keep that all open. That process is probably a week to having all those units, all three of them hooked up. Somewhere in there, if you can help me, Charlene, there's a February 22 date, and I can't remember what it does, but it's like the major completion date is somewhere around that.
I think we anticipate substantial completion by the end of February ideally, but, you know, a lot depends on those air handlers arriving and then being installed.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson?
Just a clarification on the statement you made about the doors at the, you're talking about doors right at the bottom of the stairs? So, would you just clarify what will actually be used in the lower level?
Well, we don't anticipate ever using the lower level again for any children's activity, but it is a maintenance room with all sorts of connecting points for the air handlers, and we just don't feel that it should be remained open. Right now, you could walk 100 feet from the bottom of the stairs, straight east, pass both handling units and other equipment over into the left. So, we're just, we're going to come with a recommendation to install a door to block that off.
I thought the original was just going to take the one side of that big room down there, but you're saying the entire basement then will not be able to be?
There's ductwork going every which way to the units. That side you're talking about is just the air handling unit itself marked on the floor there, so I don't know what it is. It's like 15 by 40 feet or whatever. So, there will be more mechanical all over that room, and so it is not going to be used for any community ed and recreation programs.
Additional discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilmember Christensen?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ammon?
Aye.
Dawkins?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays. The resolution passes. Next item on the agenda is a request to purchase and replace an international truck with snow removal equipment. Public Works Director Christensen?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, per the equipment purchase policy and in the capital improvement plan, it's been approved for multiple years on this particular item. You have before you a request to purchase and replace a current international truck with snow plow removal equipment. Recommended action by staff, of course, is to approve this purchase because we got about a six-to-nine-month waiting period on getting this piece of equipment. Total cost for the equipment is $164,589.72. As you can see before you, $78,812.72 from Assle Ford International for the truck only through a state contract, number 052445. $85,777 from Towmaster, Inc. for the plow, the dump body, warning lights, hydraulic system through a different state contract, number 77941. Assle Ford International will be credited, will credit, it should say, actually, $26,000 for the trade of the truck on that state contract. Their current truck, the trade-in truck is a 2005 International 7400 dump truck. Unit has 5,600 hours of performed maintenance and also has engine and turbo system problems, broken leaf springs, starting issues. Alternatives, of course, are to keep this truck and continue to do additional maintenance on it. The financial considerations for this particular item, in the 2015 capital outlet program, we included $170,000 for the purchase of the truck and the additional equipment, and the additional comments is an objective down there to reduce annual maintenance on equipment costs for the city of Wilmer.
Okay, council?
Move to approve.
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve. Discussion? Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question on the trade-in. We look at $164,000. Is that after the trade-in has been taken off, or how does the $26,000 enter into this?
Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Anderson, I'm glad you asked because I asked the same question right before we came here. The $26,000 will be credited after that $165,000 will be spent. That $26,000 credit will be used for taxes, licenses, and things of that nature on the truck itself.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to remind staff for future purchases, the policy that we changed last year, I believe it was, was to any purchase over $10,000 was to go to the appropriate committee and then the council.
Thank you. Additional discussion? Councilmember Fagerly? I'll get there. Work with me.
For Sean, is this gas or is this diesel?
I believe they're all diesel.
They're diesel?
Yes, sir.
All right, thanks.
Councilmember Ammon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And this is slightly different from the other truck. Is there room for passenger seats? Is that correct?
Mayor, members of the council, there is, I believe in all of them, there is one passenger seat, you know, and not including the console, I guess, that would have all the equipment on it.
Okay, there's not extended air ride seats on both sides?
Mayor, members of the council, I believe that it's just the air ride on the one side.
Just on one side, all right, thank you.
Additional discussion? Seeing hearing none, roll call.
Councilmember Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ammon?
Aye.
Dawkins?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays. The resolution passes. Next way of consideration of a petition for partial street vacation. City Administrator Stevens?
Yes, Mayor and council, the city has received a request for a petition for the vacation of one block of Third Street Southwest between Trot Avenue and Minnesota Avenue, was filed by Rice Memorial Hospital and Shared Health Services, LLC. The street has been closed to through traffic for over 10-plus years, and this has been before the Planning Commission, but it is required that the city council conduct a hearing, and it is the recommendation of staff to set the hearing for February 17, 2015.
Move to approve, Mr. Mayor.
Motion made to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion?
Question?
Councilmember Ammon?
Shared Health Resources, is that the other building across from Family Practice?
I think Shared Health Resources, if I am correct, Councilmember Ammon, I think is actually a partnership between Rice Hospital and Family Practice.
Thank you.
Additional discussion? Seeing and hearing none. I'll move to adopt the resolution setting a public hearing for February 17, 2015. Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ammon?
Aye.
Dawkins?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays. Resolution passes. Next on the agenda, we have some old business, the designation of local newspaper. Charlene Stevens?
Yes, at the council reorganization meeting of January 12, there were a number of questions regarding the designation of the West Central Tribune as the official newspaper for the city publications, specifically kind of regarding the requirement that they have a 75% penetration rate. The city did receive some additional information from West Central Tribune, and the city attorney reviewed that as well, and the city attorney can speak to that, but the West Central Tribune did provide information that their household penetration is 55%. However, it's the opinion of the city attorney, and he'll explain that further, that the 75% portion of the statute does not apply in this case, and I would ask the city, and I would ask you to have the city attorney explain that more clearly.
Could you please address that?
Certainly. Mayor, members of the council, the city administrator did forward to me a letter that the West Central Tribune sent. The letter, I believe, asserted that they have a 55% circulation rate within the city and then asserted that the 75% rate that is in the statute does not apply to them. And I reviewed the statute after looking at the letter and determined that is correct, and I can kind of walk you through how this works a little bit. The statute, 331A.02, for your reference, sets forth a number of requirements for a newspaper to meet to be a qualified newspaper, and they're mostly dealing with format, the language it has to be in. It does include, among those requirements, a fairly minimal circulation, minimum circulation rate of 400 households within the political subdivision. It does not require circulation to exceed 75%. There's then a different section of the same chapter of statutes that sets forth a priority. So, if there are more than one qualified newspapers in or near a jurisdiction, you have to follow the order of priorities in how you designate your newspaper. And the first priority is if there is a qualified newspaper within the city limits of your city, you must designate it. If there are more than one, you have to designate one of them, but in Wilmer's case, my understanding is there is just one. So, that statute operates to require the city to designate the West Central Tribune. Where the 75% circulation threshold comes in is there is then an exception in the statute that says you don't have to follow our required order of priorities. In the rare event that there is a different newspaper out there that also covers your local government, that, among other things, has at least a 75% circulation within your city. So, that's how that 75% requirement comes into play. It is not applicable to the West Central Tribune because they weren't designated as the official paper. As an exception to that required order of priorities, it was designated because of that order of priorities. So, it just, it doesn't apply to them. I know that might sound complicated, so I'm happy to try and answer any questions anyone might have about it.
Okay. Any discussion, questions? Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The local newspaper also has a weekly called the Wilmer Reminder. I think it's separate from the Tribune, and I don't know if rates are less expensive in it or not, but would that be an option? It comes out every Saturday. It's called the Wilmer Reminder, and it's in addition to the Saturday's paper. Again, I don't know what the rates are on there, but if they're less expensive, it might be worth looking into.
Councilmember Christensen, I don't know if that is technically a qualified newspaper or not. I had been informed that there is only one qualified newspaper in the city. I would have to investigate that, and at this point, we'd be looking at that for, at the earliest point you could do it, it'd be the next year, but if that's something the council wants me to look into, certainly, I'd be happy to do that.
I'll look into it.
Okay.
Mayor?
Other discussion? Councilmember Nelson?
Is there some way that we can put this on record now so we don't have to do this every year? How much money did we spend, the taxpayers' money, to research this, and we did it the last time? Is there someplace we can put it on file so that we don't have to go through this again?
Councilmember Nelson, the reason I asked us to maybe take it the next step and have the city attorney look at it was for that reason, so that we can have that on record so that when this comes up in our next reorganizational meeting, we can talk about it, we can draw this information forward, we can have that as background documentation so that we won't have to go through that again. I think that we've been very thorough in our process. I think it clearly states that the West Central Tribune does meet that, and so I'm comfortable with it at this point, and I guess if the council would like some further action, we can certainly do that, but I would certainly ask staff to bring that back to us at the next reorganizational meeting so that we do have this documentation. You know, we had three council members that brought it up. I mean, it wasn't just one council member, so I felt it was important that we get an answer to the question. And I do agree with you that it's been brought up numerous times. Kevin, how many times, do you know how many times it's brought up? I can think of two times at least before this, so.
That's all we find on the record.
So, on the record, there's officially two other times this has been discussed, the same issue, and then it came up again this year, so it's total of three times it's been brought before us. So, my intent to have the additional work done was to try to put it to bed, but then again, I mean, if we had one council member bringing it up, it would be an issue, but we had three council members at the last meeting bring it up.
I think it's just fine as long as we don't, it's like repeating it, and we're spending the money to do the same thing we've done three times now, so I think our minutes would reflect the same discussion the last time, so that's my question.
And I will ask staff at the next reorganizational meeting that we bring this forward, this information so that we have it. So, and I do agree with you, I mean, we spent taxpayer dollars to research this, and I believe probably the last two times, we probably spent taxpayer dollars too to get the same answer.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep. Councilmember Ammon?
I was one of those three that asked, and I guess my reasoning for that, I understand that the circulation of papers have a third party that do the audits, you might say, of what the readership is in the community, for any given community. It's an independent audit that they subscribe to so they can tell their people they're selling their advertising to what their circulation number is. My concern was not necessarily the West Central Tribune at all, as far as being the primary newspaper. My issue was, are we getting the word out to the people? And when the 75% rule issue came into play, we needed clarification on it, and I'm glad I'm very comfortable with the answer. But I, again, as I previously, at last meeting, Mr. Mayor and council, how are we reaching the other 30? at last meeting, Mr. Mayor and council, how are we reaching the other 3,600 people if there's 8,000 people in the community? If we're only reaching 55, can we do better? And that's something we need to work on. That was the primary reason for the inquiry of this, of the West Central Tribune's information and the readership.
Sure. And I think that what I would ask staff to do for the next reorganizational meeting is to actually have this percentage saturation for the next meeting so that when we bring it forward, we actually know that number.
We can certainly do that, Mr. Mayor.
Other discussion? Next item on the agenda is a request from councilmember Amen at the last meeting to make some comments to the council. So I'll just introduce it that way. Councilmember Amen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. As you know, I'm not silent. And I had requested or sent this information to everybody, and it's impossible for me to speak personally to each, every, each and every councilperson on some thoughts I have because I'd be in violation of the open meeting law, so the only way this can be done is by open dialogue at the, at this type of a setting. As I said, as another year slips by and the new year approaches, I feel compelled to list some items that we, the mayor, city, and council may consider or discuss to help establish our goals and objectives. The following are just some of my thoughts to stimulate discussion and action between us, and you've read those, but one thing that I did, would like some thought on is number four, which has, have each committee together with appropriate staff develop an annual goal and priority list at the beginning of each calendar year, along with the anticipated timeframe and the approximate cost to complete. The reason for that is we've been accused of not stating our goals and our priorities, and we, at the last, to retreat, did not accomplish that task, and I'm just trying to stimulate that process. Mr. Mayor, you mentioned earlier that you're going to have, you're in favor of having a retreat, that's going to be put on our agenda for the next Labor Relations Committee meeting coming up Wednesday. And the other, one issue is request each councilperson to submit an annual list of priorities, goals, and objectives that they would like the council to discuss or take action on. That isn't mandatory, but sometimes as a group, we can do this in a setting and pay a retreat facilitator many thousands of dollars, or we can just take a piece of paper and write down our thoughts. And it would probably help, my, my reason is it would probably help the facilitator, whoever's going to do this, if you knew each individual and what some of their issues are that they want to talk about, this may save us some time as far as the length of time that we have to hire a facilitator to set our priorities and our goals. Anyway, in the end of my comment, I just said, as one of eight, as one of eight councilpeople, I nor any other one councilperson make change. Together, through open discussion and offering alternatives versus slam dunking an idea, progress can be made, and I look forward to working with you to discuss my ideas and your ideas also. Happy New Year. Thank you for your time, Mr. Mayor and the council. I'll be glad to talk with anybody, anytime. Thank you.
Councilmember Amen, what I'd like to do with this is that, to give it to the city administrator, to have her work with our facilitator when we are going to do our retreat, and just have that be maybe a jumping off point, something we can talk about there. So are you okay if we do that?
That's fine.
Okay. So that would be what I would recommend us doing. Council, or city administrator Stevens, you understand?
Yep, I do, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
We can do that.
Okay. Update on Vision 2040. City Administrator Stevens?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. A couple items I would like to give an update on for Vision 2040. You had asked for an update. Couple items I'd like to kind of draw the council's attention to and the public's attention to is tomorrow evening, Wednesday, January 21st, from 6:00 to 8:30 at the Wilmer Middle School in the cafeteria, there will be an event entitled Cross Cultural Conversation for Community Engagement, and I know that's kind of a long title and a bit of a mouthful, but it is a workshop that is geared around building skills for talking with others across cultural boundaries, enhancing skills for deeper listening to others, and to learn a practical model for cross-cultural conversation in an interfaith community. And the Vision 20, Wilmer Lakes Area Vision 2040 is a sponsor of this, as is the Wilmer Lakes Area Chamber. Wilmer Community and Recreation as well is sponsoring it, is facilitated by the Reverend Ron Duty, who is a PhD and a retired pastor. He has done this workshop in a number of other communities. Some of those communities are in Minnesota, and some of them are outside of Minnesota, such as Atlanta and Nashville and Savannah, and we think it's going to be a very good event. There's no fee to attend, it's open to anybody who wishes to participate. You don't even have to pre-register, and so we would hope to see individuals there. And then I'd also like to highlight our Leadership 2040 program, which kicked off two weeks ago in the, January 9th. This is a leadership class, an intensive leadership class that was developed by a group of volunteers and was really geared to increase leadership development opportunities in our community, something that was identified as part of the Vision 2040 goals. And we have been working with the University of Minnesota Extensions, Center for Community Vitality, in developing the curriculum. We kicked off the class with 29 individuals. Our maximum cutoff was 30, so we feel very good about that. Feel very good about the individuals in the class, a very balanced class. A couple of, councilmember Nelson is actually a participant in the class, and Chief Felton is a participant in the class, and there's a good mix of individuals from government and from the private sector, from nonprofit organizations, and from within the city of Wilmer, and then from within Candelah High County, and it is six sessions. It'll go through May with graduation in, I'm sorry, graduation will occur in June. And then we were also working on a program that will start up again, another opportunity for this class in September of this year, and it was really geared to be hearing a lot of feedback from the chamber's leadership perspectives, being a good kind of introductory experience to leadership, and this being a little bit more intensive and an opportunity for individuals. And so those are a couple of the programs I would like to highlight for you. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any councilmembers have any questions about the Vision 2040 process? Councilmember Amen?
Budget? Financially? I know they were requesting some more money currently.
The budget, many of these programs are funded, there was grant funding that was received from the Wilmer Area Community Foundation. The Vision 2040 received $25,000 grant from the Wilmer Area Community Foundation. Approximately $10,000 of that went to the Leadership 2040, and the other two programs being sponsored, I'm drawing a blank on, and I'm looking towards Ken Warner, who's in the back, if he can highlight the two programs for me. But there were two additional programs that were sponsored by that, and then the community stakeholders have been asked to put in an addition, some additional funds, and I think that number was 2,500 for those initial, for those community stakeholders. And other fundraising has occurred by the individual groups themselves.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Nelson?
Some of that money, I think, is going towards a house, possibly going to the housing study?
Possibly a housing study, and some of it was also, as I now recall, to support some of the movies in the park.
Just a small amount with that.
Yeah, thank you.
I was thinking there was another one, but I don't remember.
Additional comments?
Could somebody explain, there's a lot of...
Councilmember Amen?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Didn't get recognized. Thank you for correcting me.
We're trying.
Yeah, we're working.
I couldn't get councilmember Fagerly's name earlier, so I was going to turn it around. We're all working together here, so...
There's been a lot of discussion, I've attended a few of the meetings on the, on 2040, on housing, the housing issue, and the word workforce housing has come up several, several times in the newspaper, and I'm just wondering what, how can you define workforce housing? And what is the goal? What are they trying to accomplish? And could you please define workforce housing?
I'm not certain that I can define that. There is a group working on workforce housing, and I'm not involved intimately with that group, so I would defer to, to the leadership of that group, and Jill Bengston was one of those individuals who was here, and she has left, but I can get that information and provide it to council at another time.
Councilmember Amen, maybe if it would be okay with you, we could actually have a brief report on that at our next council meeting to actually define what that is. One of my goals is to keep Vision 2040 in front of us, and that would be a good segue to bring that back in front of us, so... Councilmember Nelson?
I am part of that group, but I would encourage people, the League of Minnesota Cities has workforce housing information on their website. I believe the legislature is also looking at funding for workforce housing, so there's a lot of information out there with regard to that, and, you know, I think it's available just to research, and the minutes from the, those meetings are out on the 2040 website too, so...
Certainly. My question to you, councilmember Nelson, on that would be, are we going to have a local definition of that? And I mean, I guess I'd kind of like to bring it to the next meeting, but I mean, if you want to answer that, that's fine, but...
I don't know that that group is that far to say that there's a local definition. We did a tour of the housing in Wilmer. We've done some research on what's going on in other communities, and workforce housing is not necessarily subsidized housing, it is housing, and there are different projects going on in other communities, Marshall, I'm trying to think of some of the others. We talked about Mankato. There's just a lot of information being gathered right now, and the one thing they did come up with is that we need to have a new housing study done, the one that, that had been done is outdated, and so that was part of what we were looking at, and I think, I haven't been at the last meeting, but I think they're looking at RFPs for a housing study through, with HRA and some additional information, so...
Okay, thank you. I know Doug Fenster is one of our local realtors, and he and I had a conversation, man, that's going to be a month ago now, isn't it, Doug? And so we actually talked about that, and I was surprised when you start talking about that workforce housing, at what level you're really talking. I mean, when I had my initial conversation, I mean, I thought we were talking, I think I told you, 75, 85,000, maybe topside of 100, and I was quickly educated that I was incorrect. So we have a lot of learning to do, so thanks for bringing that up, so... I'm sorry, councilmember Amen?
Well, I've got just, since we're on the subject briefly, workforce housing, I associate that with, if the states are going to be involved, and they're talking about it, Miss Nelson, at the state level, in other words, it's going to be federal or state funding, so taxpayers' money is going to be used to build workforce housing. That's what I interpret that as, and I guess what I'm understanding, there's different terminologies on how you interpret, what do you interpret workforce housing to be? Is it employer-owned? Do the employers that need space for people, for workforce housing? Is it low-income housing? Or is it this market-rate housing? That's a big difference. When you say workforce housing, it's like just specifically what, what is it we're looking at? Because if we're looking at an issue of using state and federal funds, that means, and also there will be an obligation from the city to require maintenance of those streets and everything else in front of it, so that's a financial obligation our behalf too, and I'm just concerned how that's going to be affected, how we're going to be affected by it. Thank you.
You know, the more I'm hearing about this conversation, this might be better to start at the retreat and then bring back at another time. It's kind of how it's sounding to me, so... Okay. Councilmember Nelson, I had asked if you wanted to make a presentation on the project that we sat in on, on Thursday. I think it's a tremendous opportunity of another thing happening in Vision 2040. Were you prepared to do that?
I am not prepared to do a presentation per se, but there, it's called Work Up, that is, and it's occurring out at, out on the campus of, in, of...
Minwest Campus.
Minwest Campus, thank you. There will be an opportunity to do some tours out there. Betsy Bonnema is working on that, and it's very exciting to take a look at space for individual people to work from, those types of things, and I had asked you, you were at that meeting also, I thought it might be a good opportunity for the council to have a tour. They're not ready to go yet, and they, while the website is up and running, there is not actually handout information, and so be happy to bring back additional information in the future for that, but I do think that's an exciting project that's going on, and should be interesting to follow, and I think it's a short timeframe. Does anybody remember? March, maybe?
Yep.
That they're looking at, so maybe something that we can talk about again.
Thank you. Thank you for those updates on Vision 2040. Again, I think that this, that I would like to keep that in front of the council, and so if you have comments on that, let me know. Chief Hendrickson, if you could give us a couple of comments on the gas leak, I know that those can be some very harrowing experiences for the fire service, having come from there, so... Chief Hendrickson?
Mayor Kelvin and members of council, on January 15th at 4:14 in the morning, Wilmer PD was called to a personal injury accident involving a single vehicle that, at that time, they just figured it was an accident. Upon arrival, Wilmer PD investigated and found that it did hit a gas line, consequently, the fire department was dispatched at 4:16 in the morning. Upon arrival, myself and Deputy Chief Gilbertson investigated and found that a gas supply header with two high-pressure lines that feed it at 95 PSI had been hit and continued to leak gas at a high rate. It kind of sounded like a jet engine, basically. So we only had to evacuate one house that was immediately adjacent to that. For those that are interested, it's right in the parking lot, basically a First Reformed Church in the cemetery that's adjacent to that. Mini-Gasco arrived about 45 minutes later and thought they were going to be able to shut it off, unfortunately due to the damage. It continued on for the next day and a half, as many Wilmer residents know, based on the high-traffic volume on 15th Street Southwest. So there were no injuries to firefighters or civilians. It has been put back into service. It'll probably, they have a temporary high-pressure line there now, and they will have further maintenance as they rebuild that back in the metro and then ship it back out.
Thank you for that report, thorough report. I appreciate that. Also want to thank you and your staff, also the police department and their response, along with the ambulance service. I know you guys work well together, so thank you for your dedication to our community. We've seen some of that tonight with the number of firefighters here. It's very encouraging to see the support you have, Chief Hendrickson, so keep up the good work, so...
Thank you, sir.
Council have any questions? Okay, hearing none. Announcement of council committee meeting dates. Finance?
Mr. Mayor, finance committee will not meet.
No meeting for finance. Public Works, Public Safety?
Mr. Mayor will meet Tuesday, the 27th, at 4:45 PM.
Community Development?
No meeting, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Amen, Labor?
Labor at 28th, Wednesday, 4:45. Is that not going to work?